How are you, Linda?
I'm fine.
I'm good. Are you like counting down the days? You're like, no, she's not.
I've been trying to extend up the list.
Are we gonna do a party for you when you go? Why not? Are you just not a party person? Can we do like a goodbye, but in a way that you like it? And just be like very gentle and like calm? Like if we all brought you a thing? Yes, because Kate didn't want a big deal either when she was leaving. She wasn't retiring, so. But we gotta do something special for you.
Send me on the way.
Alright. Okay, I think I'm all good here. I was like, don't be influencing my new employees. Appreciate that.
Pay raise to...
Mistress of darkness, yes. How are you? Good, very good.
I don't know who that is.
No, I don't.
They're loud tonight.
Be louder.
What are we gonna do with this party?
We're starting the meeting. Alright, Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Jeff Baath.
Here.
NBC.
Motion approved, votes accepted.
I'll second.
Motion to the second to approve. Those sets of minutes for September and October. September 29th. Roll call vote, please.
Shane, Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Jeff Baath.
Yes.
Quick treasurer to report.
Okay, before I get started, I'd like to introduce Karen Parkinson. If you'll stand up, Karen. Karen is gonna take Linda's place, if that's possible.
We say she can.
Yeah. And she's in training now. It might not be here till sometime in January unless we talk her into staying longer. She has one more thing to do. She's gotta teach Karen how she walks on water than she can. That's it. Thank you. Alright, now the good news. We see here the general fund is in real good shape for this year. I think everyone's seen the accounts payable vouchers. Let's see, I just need you guys to sign that. And the livestock, the same thing, so. Okay, that's about it, all I have, Jeff.
Questions or comments? Not a motion to approve. I'll second. Motion of a second to approve. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Jeff Baath.
Yes.
Reports. Chief four, you guys think you will have any more?
Nothing new.
Question, that's all?
No.
Chief four.
Listen, there was a specific question about anything. The only thing that's kinda new is Rafael Sanchez sent out a tweet today about Conick, what's on my office manager, so if you're on Twitter, retweet her or like it. He was just acknowledging her 40 years of service in the law enforcement community.
Guys, may I speak again, President? He brought that up. I got a phone call this morning from Rafael Sanchez also. He has a early morning section on his report on Channel 6 for what he calls a hometown hero. And he had read on one of the Facebook pages about Donnie Brooks. And for those of you that don't know Donnie Brooks, he lives in Huntsville and for the many, many years, he would walk to town in the morning and spend two or three days at the fire station. He sweeps the floor, he washes gear, does general things around the fire station and donates his time. And Rafael picked this up and he was gonna do a report on him. And he plans on doing that Monday morning at the 6 o'clock in the morning broadcast, somewhere in there, as long as the world doesn't fall apart between now and then. So if you're up that early, you might tune in Channel 6 and see.
Most of you already realize the wheels of justice turn slow. Well, they continue to turn even slower than it has been before. It used to take two hours, takes four hours now. The good part about it too, the court has received over 250% increase in the number of tickets written in the last few months. So for those who've been speeding, get away from it. The officers have basically turned loose again.
Just one last bug for the Arbor Day bit coming up on the 24th. Anyone that wants to sign up to help plant things at private residences or in the park and get with the foundation, they'd be happy to sign you up. That's October 24th, we're gonna start at 8:00 a.m. So get your friends and get your shovels and come plant some trees.
We had a mystery mulch incident today. We had ordered mulch and we couldn't find where it was delivered. Erin located it.
It's safe. There's a doorstep. The YMCA's.
That Halloween prank there.
Is that a try or try?
Yes. So just to let you know, we're collecting bids now for, well, really quotes for three new pickup trucks we're trading in too. It's either 2008, 2009, they're all rusted up and we're the two I've seen so far, it's amazing how much we're getting for those, the trade-ins. We're gonna get two V plows. We traded in the box plow that we don't use anymore. You need a front loader to do that. And we got a pretty good price for it, I think $1,300. So we're gonna use that towards the V plow and then also the bobcat plow. Which the advantage of both plow and not only can we do some wider sidewalk, but it can lift snow. So if we have to invest, you know, we have to build up piles, we can do that. Oh, got a typo. That's supposed to be Community Crossings Grant. That's my fault, I didn't return too early. That we're gonna go for for Water Street Construction and Franklin Street. That's, we put up 25% plus design and then NDOT or the state puts up 75%. So right, so we did that to pave some streets this summer out at Huntsinger Farms, Main Street. Where else did we go? Rachel, you put that together.
It was all Huntsinger, Main, Northwest Drive, West Street, part of Madison and Main. I think that's it.
Yeah, I think we got it. The next thing I wanna talk about, if you look at this photo, this is in Greenfield. We're using a, and I wanted to show you what they have done. We're gonna use Plant Growth Management to tackle the really bad situation we have with trees that are growing into our power lines and falling on our power lines. The tornado took a situation that probably was not good and just made it three, four times worse. As you know, we've had a lot of power interruptions. Almost all, all those is due to limbs or trees falling on our power lines. What Plant Growth Management is gonna do for us, and this will start in about 10 days, is they're gonna manage the contracts and manage the tree trimming companies that'll come in. And they'll clear the lines underneath the power lines. So this photo, if you look to the right, those, those trees, their brother trees, used to be into those power lines. So if you could imagine what that looks like with all those trees in that power line, you couldn't even see the power lines. They came in and they use either traditional tree trimming or what they call a mechanical, where it's a, almost like an auger machine. And it'll come in and it'll take down, take down trees. And they'll go right down underneath the power lines. And then in some cases, like where you have honeysuckle or mulberry bush trees that are growing very rapidly, they'll actually spray the roads retardant on the trunks. And in the end, this is what it looks like, this is one year later. Right underneath the power lines, it's been mowed, just maintained by the property owner there. But off to the right, higher grass, that's after one year. But you can see that they did a pretty good job of clearing those power lines. So if we could go to the next line. So that's gonna happen. What I really like about what they're gonna do is they're gonna contact each property owner before they do this. And if we have a right of way through a property and they do not want us to go in and trim the tree traditionally or use the mechanical clearing, which by the way, it'll spit out nice mulch at the end. People have found it to be pretty good. They like it. Farmers love it. Once in a while, you can get somebody that doesn't want it done. And then what we'll do is, if that's the situation, we'll go in and talk to them and say, well, what can we do at this point? We do have to clear the power lines. But how would you like to work with the property owners? I think that's the most important component out of all this. And they'll use door hangers before they, before they do it. We'll have door hangers, they'll get notified. And then, like I said, the homeowner may refuse us, refuse the way we're doing it. Propose to do it and then we'll work with the homeowners. I'd like to thank Craig, here, head of our electric department, our woman there. He came to me with this idea. It worked very well in Greenfield and went some other communities. Nine Star. So we're, this is, we're using somebody that has pretty good credibility. Street Department guys did a real good job on fixing the right of way flooding issue that we have that parallels McCoy in the backyards. And we did it with our own forces. The only expense we had was for some sand, the drainage pipe that we put in. We could only put in an eight inch, we put in three yard drains. And that should take care of a lot of the standing water that was ruining our power lines back there. And it was just a miserable situation for everybody on McCoy and the back of State Street. And then the water department, I don't know what it was, the sudden drop in water or temperatures outside, but they had numerous leaks this last few weeks. So that's, that's the highlights of Town Manager's report. Any questions?
Okay.
Craig, did you wanna ask anything about the Plant Growth Management?
I believe you covered it really well.
Okay.
Should I talk about the NDOT thing right now or should we do it later?
Yeah, you can go.
Okay, I've got a quick request before we move on.
Last month, we had talked about, you guys made the motion to approve the NDOT. No, you guys made the motion to approve the LPA consultant contract for the US 36 State Road 67 project to do the pedestrian improvement out there. You guys got that all signed for me this past week and I submitted it to NDOT and now we're working on the NDOT LPA contract. And I'm hoping to get it early next week. And I wanna get it signed and sent off so we can get going on the project. So what I'm looking for is just a resolution or a motion to accept that contract after Jeff Graham reviews it. It's an NDOT boilerplate contract. We as a community really can't fix it or do anything different to it. And we just need to get that going as soon as possible. So if you guys can make a motion to sign that after his review, so that whenever it comes in, we can do it rather than having to wait for another council meeting. That would really be helpful for us. Yes, the LPA contracts require all the signatures from you guys again, just like you did on the other contract that we did.
This is a good type of contract. This is, they're reimbursing us 80%. So it's a, it's a good one.
Do you have any questions?
Get that so well known. Send us a text.
Yes.
With the detail. Be the high and low.
Yes.
Yeah, we do need a vote to approve contention on legal review.
I'll second. Steve Denny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Jeff Baath.
Hi.
Thank you.
Next thing is the public hearing regarding the 2020 budget. Initial public review. On Wednesday, on the 21st.
Jeff, what time is that meeting?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
We just have to re-advertize?
Yeah, we talked previously about that plant commission. Possibly, I just wanted to get that straightened out while we had everybody together. Figure out the time, okay?
My only, we had an issue last night with a plat that was trying to get approved and we had to resend some notices out. The petitioner resented them today because we thought the meeting was at 7:00. They got resented out for the 7:00 o'clock meeting. Yes. So if we can't change it to, you know, if we need to change the plan commission meeting time, we can send, resend those certified mailings out, but if we can avoid it. But I understand there's a bigger picture here, so.
Just whatever works for you, but we'll adjust to you.
And we ready to add a plant commission before we leave.
Plan commission.
Likely issue a recommendation at that meeting and you can vote on that recommendation. So they have to go first.
We need another meeting, a special meeting.
Or you can do that. The thought was do 7:00, 7:30 or 5:30, 6:00, whatever is best. If you guys want to meet at 6:00, that's, that's fine. Might be a couple of notices resent. No big deal. You guys want to meet at 7:30, no additional notices have to be sent. It's not, it's not a big deal. I just wanted to get it, because we do have to provide notice in the newsroom. So I, I'll have to do that tomorrow.
Alright, so we do plan commission at 7:00. We'll do town council at 7:30. The 21st.
That'll be the second reading of the budgets, I understand. Yeah, this is the No, we're still gonna cancel. She said 6:00. Okay.
Explain any sense from this? Really, does the state allow any increases?
Yeah, I'd allow it. 4.2%.
Lily, I do notice of the DLGF4, we noticed that there was adoption meeting signs in there. Is changing that gonna create a problem? I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so, but I need to talk to your to see if I can use it.
Any questions or comments? Budget, I suppose, is good. They use the power levy that we have available. One thing, I guess this time to bring it up, but as most of you know, I've always been against across the board raises for everybody. This year, we'll put the numbers in there, the dollars. But everybody go get an evaluation. And everybody will be graded on what your increases. And check and balance every one of the places. Scott's gonna do all of his guys. Unless I disguise his.
Super.
Park, supervisor. Willie, just so we don't have somebody playing games with individuals. Willie and Scott will agree on individual people's raises as far as the be correct, Linda, I'm always aware of this. We're looking at putting 3% in there in, in the budget. But that'll be not individual people. You as the department heads will get so much money and then you split the money up based on the appraisals or evaluations. Shane is working on the salary ordinance. Because to do this, we'll have to make some changes to the salary ordinance. Because of what, the way our ordinance is wrote, it's, you just got a max. And everybody is on the max because of the 3%. And your, your gap between, you know, the low, lower paid people, the higher paid people just keeps getting bigger. This, this will level it out eventually, not overnight. Didn't happen overnight, but I think this is the best way to go. Like I said, Shane was working on the salary ordinance and what we're gonna have to change there. Salary ordinance is not a part of, it's, it's approved by itself, not with the budget. If I'm saying something wrong, somebody speak up. But I think this is something that we have looked at and talked about far too long and we're gonna implement it. So everybody is appraised and you get a raise based on your job performance through your evaluation. Just so everybody knows. Any questions or comments?
Yes. I agree with everything you just said, but with that, I'd like to take into account, sorry, I'm taking my glasses off because when I talk, my glasses get stained up. Human factor in all this. And I really think we need to have a staff looking into tracking system that can be in place for management where you can, like trying to put in evaluations, comments from the public. Somebody called in and said this employee did something really good. It's more of a benefit than a attraction, but it also can be used for disciplinary things. I have found over the years that it, as a manager myself, that it is very helpful. And I can go back throughout the year and review everything, the good and the bad. And then that can help me make the decision on what Jeff just talked about. So I would like to see something in place that, that we could use as a helpful tool for management when they're evaluating their employees. And as the town manager, he would be able to And as the town manager, he would be able to review every employee. And then let's say the electric department manager could review all his people or her people and Willie could review all of, or treasurer's people, but he would be able to see what was in the street department files. That would just be my suggestion.
I'm going to piggyback on that, but Steve and I have talked about this for a couple , three months. He, he has used this system in his current position with the city of Amersham. And it's really not that expensive to get and use. So if you would, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but let's set up a meeting with Scott and Willie, I guess, with this gentleman, this local guy. And I, I think it keeps everything clean, like, so you've got a good check and balance and good records if you're going to keep it. Steve and I have talked, Steve says, you know, when something comes in good, you remember that as a manager, but when it comes time for the evaluations, you forget a lot, good and bad. You plug that into the hack, you said it'll take two minutes. It's a record. So if you would have given that gentleman, okay?
I think it's going to just help streamline to make this whole process easier.
I had a quick comment, just as a staff member. It concerns me a little bit at this point in the year that we don't know what we're going to be graded on, graded on for this at the end of the year. So I'm just kind of curious to see how that will, how that's going to get factored into this round. I mean, I think, you know, at the beginning of the year, staff is told, these are the things we're going to be evaluating on, that's going to help us perform better and meet the goals of what our managers want. But we're in September, not that I'm worried that my, like, I know my department does very well and I'm proud of my department and I know, I think we would score well, but I don't know exactly what you would be looking for out of me, you know? So there's just some of that, that we need to get worked out, especially for next year moving forward.
Especially for next year.
Yeah. Because of, because of this year, I, I made a decision on the evaluations that they'll be general in nature, but Rachel's right, you need to tell, part of the process is you talk about upfront, when the year starts, what they will be evaluated on. And then that's the complete cycle. But because of, and it starts till July and the COVID and all that, we'll just finish out this year and just do general evaluations and, and they won't be, well, there'll be specific comments, but it won't be based on any goals, because we didn't set the goals. Now for 2021, upfront, we'll set the goals, what the employees will be evaluated on based on what their job is. And then, and then in 2021, at the end of 2021, then you, then we'll do that. And I think the software you're talking about may be familiar.
Do what?
I may be familiar with the software you're talking about.
You probably are.
Yeah.
What Scott just talked about, you know, we, we didn't get in this non-evaluation pay raise, I call it, overnight. So this first year, it's going to be that way. But one of the things, the park department, Aaron, you, you need to make sure you pass this on to your board, okay? But town employee is a town employee, park, police department, and what I call the hill in this building. So every town employee to qualify for the raise makes us managers do our job and do the evaluations. And that's where they're going to do it. So Aaron, if you have a problem with, like you personally, but your board or something, call me, we'll talk, okay? But everybody's going to be treated the same, is what I'm trying to say. We'll do it that way.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I think what would be helpful is if you all use the same evaluation form and that all the managers would have a training session so that all the employees receive the same type of information.
That's what Steve's.
That's what you're talking about. That's for next year, right? Okay, but for this year, on your evaluation department you used for this past year, if you do, everybody uses the same form, then we train the managers the same way, then the results will be the same. So like, like Aaron may say something different than the way Scott would say it, but if they're trained, yeah, if they're trained the same way, their results should be similar.
One thing I want to bring up, something I look, that's Julie, just the chief back here. Okay? I haven't figured out how we, in whatever evaluation, who's going to do it, how they're going to do it. He deserves a raise too. And I made the comment, everybody's going to get evaluation. He, he's going to have to be evaluated. So I guess I'm going to ask the rest of the council on right now, how they're going to do this.
How about we get with, so the chief, Aaron, myself, clerk's office, and we meet sooner than later and come up with a standardization, how we finish this year out.
It's something that we talked about last year in the budget, is doing this and how the evaluations done. Then we had last town manager resign, COVID hit, it's all been in the background, like we've talked a few times, it's not a major formal, you know, but it's a, it's a starting process. And then we can set our goals in there for twenty one.
Yep.
You've got to reach that end of the year.
Push up the media, though.
Okay. I'll let you, I'll let you know too, so you, you guys can sit on it.
That's fine.
Don't worry, we'll have something.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, we've talked about it.
It'll be just more general characteristics, general work standards versus more specific.
It's not going to be goal oriented right now.
Right.
We just really haven't had it.
Right.
During this question, the comments right now on the budget, pretty straightforward in the budget. One year from now, I'll be asking the same question.
I think yes.
Somebody asked me the other day about something in the budget, I go, what Linda said. What Linda said, okay? If you do legal, I do, anyone would all, so appreciate it. Nothing else on the budget, I'm going to go ahead and.
Just for the record, if you could just formally, or formally invite public comment, either online or folks that are here, la- last call for comments on the, on the budget, because tonight's just introduction. This is the, there won't be a public hearing on the twenty first, so this is the opportunity for members.
Anybody that's here for public input and anybody that's online, it's my public input on the budget, propose, love you. Speak up. If not.
And Willie or Scott, oh, sorry.
I'm just going to ask, where's the copy, the budget? Okay.
Online.
I can get them online, okay.
And Scott, you or Willie's office receive any written comments on the budget?
I don't know.
Okay.
Anything, we're going to, we're going to move on.
Close your public hearing. Kenny, Tim.
Public hearing now closed, okay?
All right. That's the way we've been operating this year, so I think we're good.
Next thing is resolution R twenty dash O eight, resolution to borrow money from the electric utility according to impact fees done.
That resolution is not in front of you because it's not been completed despite Rachel asking me last week to get it done. However, that will be in front of you on the twenty first, that's just to pay for your impact fees. Late this afternoon, you were sent an ordinance establishing a repayment policy for engineering and other professional service fees. If you would like, we could amend the agenda to consider that ordinance this evening. And this is our town manager's idea, certainly invite him to speak a little more on it, what the motivation behind this is.
So what we'd like to do, now that we have a lot of development going on, is there's going to be a lot of major infrastructure that'll be turned over to the town. Roads, sidewalks, stormwater lines, and we need to make sure that those are constructed correctly to our standards and a common engineering standards. How thick, for example, how thick is a sidewalk? Sidewalk should be at least four inches, six inches if it's an apron. How thick should the pavement be? Are they really paying, are they really putting in a four inch, six inch base, let's say, on the pavement? And it's real tempting for developers just to put in five inches versus let's say a six inch, depending on the situation. I'm just pulling a number out of the sky, but, because that can save them hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just having a presence there with somebody who's knowledgeable keeps them honest, lets us know what we're, also what we're getting into, that make sure the as-built plans reflect what was really built. And just turning over plans that don't reflect any changes they made in the field can be a problem in the, in the future as, as we become, as a town becomes owner of that road, that storm line or that sidewalk, for example. So this is common practice, this is not anything strange that we're doing, and we will have engineers on site during key construction times and phases, especially if concrete's being poured or asphalt's being laid. We'll also have our, our building inspector out there too, and he will fill the gap between, we don't want to pay for, we don't, we don't think it's efficient and fair to a developer to have somebody on site from an engineering firm all the time, but to fill the gaps when they're not there or to keep eye on the contractors or the developers to make sure they're not doing work. For example, they say they're going to lay concrete on a Wednesday, but they go out there and a common trick is they'll do it on Monday when nobody's around. And then the inspector comes around on that, on Wednesday, two days later, expecting that's when they were supposed to be putting down the concrete. Lo and behold, it's already in place. If it's real important, if it's a pipe, you know, it goes underground, gets covered. So I think this is a, a fair thing to the contractors, that we just use part-time help at key moments and then use our building inspector and myself during those other times.
And you did get this very late, if we'd like to move this to the agenda on the twenty first, we can do that as well, get a chance to read it.
I hate to sit here and not even know.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll hold on, resolution twenty dash O eight.
Leonard, do you have an ordinance number on that? It'll have a different ordinance number, but we'll have that all ready to go along with our twenty O eight for your meeting on the twenty first.
Excuse me, Kit, one thing I want to throw out here, talks about borrowing money from the electric utility, like for the impact state, this money is just like a loan, it's going to be paid back to the electric utility from the impact fees. And we're going to keep track of that.
There's time limit on the payback.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Five years.
Five years, it's got to be paid back within five. You have a comment? Okay, that's some public info.
Do we need to give them update on the ordinance stuff or do we just wait until plan commission?
She gets up to play.
Rachel?
No, nothing online.
I'd like to ask the chief what he's suggested for Halloween for the kids.
Well, we put out a notice the other day telling people they can decide whether they're going to Halloween or not. And in Indiana, the light on the front porch is usually the symbol used whether you're open for business or you're not. Kids have been told to, or parents have been told by us to look at CDC guidelines, reference the costumes. Some people were saying simple Halloween mask meets requirements, suggestions is some double layered materials. But we put that out on the Pelton PD Facebook page, we put on the town website. From what I read, it got positive reviews, so people understood what we were getting at. And the times for that night will be six to nine.
Just the one night.
Just one night.
Very good.
And it's on Halloween night, that's on Halloween.
Saturday.
Mark, are you still closing Broadway? Broadway is not going to be closed this year, it'll be open, it'll be open. And just, I haven't talked to you about it, but as far as the police department, we will not be doing a candy this year, just for the fact that we're such a large draw and didn't want to be involved in that department.
The discussion.
We'll be off the trouble.
Hopefully, the kids will just go to friends and family and good strangers and less.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark, you did turn.
No, thank you.